Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for January 25th, 2021. You will see the flag on the screen in just a moment, and when you do, if you would please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance, we will go from there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll of the members?
This is Hoppy.
Present.
This is Hutchinson. She's here, I can see.
Yeah, present.
Mr. Urban.
Present.
Ms. Haltine.
Present.
Ms. Weber.
Here.
Mr. Stites.
Here.
Ms. Dozeman.
Here.
And Ms. Nosler Beck.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, all eight members of council are present.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you all councillors for joining us tonight. We have a proclamation in support of Heart Healthy Month for February 2021, and I would like to invite Lindsay Reiner with Lutheran Medical Center and SCL Health to join our meeting along with Susan Anderson and Karen O'Donnell with our Parks and Recreation Department. Nice to have you all with us, and great, very glad to read this proclamation. Whereas February is American Heart Month, a time to increase awareness about heart disease and learn more about preventive measures to reduce the risk. And whereas cardiovascular disease is the single leading cause of death for both men and women in the United States, responsible for one in three deaths in the United States each year. And whereas every person can take steps to reduce the risk factors associated with heart disease by maintaining a healthy weight, eating healthier foods, increasing physical activity, seeking regular physician checkups, and refraining from tobacco use. And whereas the city passed a resolution in 2014 confirming the city's commitment to encourage healthy opportunities. And whereas the city's healthy eating, active living, the Heal Committee, consisting of staff from SCL Lutheran Medical Center, Kaiser Permanente, Jefferson County Public Health, Local Works, and local businesses and residents, is focused on promoting healthy opportunities for Wheat Ridge residents and businesses. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, do hereby declare the month of February 2021 as Heart Healthy Month and encourage all community members and businesses in Wheat Ridge to participate in this effort by participating in heart-healthy activities, screenings, and informational classes. Whereof, this 25th day of January 2021, Bud Starker, Mayor. So I'm really pleased to make this proclamation. I want to bring Lindsay Reiner into the conversation. Lindsay, do you have a few words that you'd like to say? There you are, I finally had to go to the screen, so.
Sure. Actually, nationally, this February marks the 56th anniversary of Heart Month. And back in 1956, it was the number-one killer of Americans. And here in 2021, it is still the number-one killer of Americans. So it's important that we take into consideration some of our healthy lifestyle choices and opportunities. And there's a statistic that I saw today that was really eye-opening, where it says that 83% of Americans believe that heart attacks can be prevented, but they are not motivated to do anything. And so if we can just continue to promote and push this out there along with active lifestyle and healthy eating options, then hopefully we can solve this and make this not the number-one killer of Americans. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And Susie and Karen, I know that we have a lot of activities here in Wheat Ridge for citizens to stay engaged and to, you know, promote their health. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
I guess I can start, Karen. Yes, so we offer a variety of programs, different types of fitness classes that we offer at the Recreation Center and when the Active Adult Center is open there as well, and at the Anderson Building, our three recreation facilities. We also offer during COVID a 100 different fitness-type classes on our virtual recreation page. So people who don't feel comfortable coming into our centers or would like to come into our centers, but some of them are closed due to COVID, they are able to still see all those fitness instructors on screen and do their exercise that way from the comfort of their home.
That's terrific. That's great that you can participate in those activities even not being in person and being safe while you're doing it. And I'm sure there's a lot of tips online and other sources to get to the healthy eating part of the equation, and it's all part of a package, but it does promote heart health, and that's a great thing to work on for our community. So thank you all very much for bringing this proclamation forward. We're really glad to push out this information to our residents. So thanks again for joining us tonight. Okay, we will move now to the approval of the minutes. Councillors, you have City Council meeting minutes of January 11, 2021 in your package. Unless I hear objections, we will let the minute stand as approved or stand as presented. Okay, I see no objections, so we will. Yes, ma'am.
This is councillor Haltine, I have an addition.
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. You've got a background that's about the same color as your hand, so.
Yeah, I'm like a chameleon here.
Okay, Ms. Haltine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one addition in, towards the end, under elected officials matters. I had mentioned a website offered by CDPHE in which they provide free radon test kits. I did send that email, I believe, to you, Steve, and I'm hoping that you can include that in the minutes as they are still offering those free radon kits. And the more we can make that widely known, the better for people.
I'm happy to do that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that clarification, Ms. Haltine. Okay, with that clarification and modification, we will let the minute stand as approved. Without objection, unless I hear objection, we will let the agenda stand as presented.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Mr. Dahl regarding the amendment, the agenda.
Okay.
In looking at Council Bill 27 and Council Bill 28, I would like to consider a postponement to a certain time or a post.
We're losing your audio. Sorry.
Definitely, which would be different from a.
Yes, I can.
You'd like to consider postponing, it's like Agenda Items Four and Five? Is that correct?
Correct.
I think.
Correct.
I think the way to accomplish that, rather than amending the agenda, because they're set as public hearings, and so there are members of the public potentially ready to testify, it would seem to me the better practice would be to, on each of those agenda items, when the public hearing is open, move to have that public hearing continue to a date certain. Certainly do it now, I suppose, as part of the approval of the agenda. But we already.
As opposed. I was just gonna say, as opposed to postponing it to a date certain, can we postpone it to a certain time after a study session has been scheduled on that? So that we, I don't know when that would be.
Sure, obviously, that will mean re-noticing for a second reading public hearing, you know, a new notice process for a second reading public hearing, but that can be done. So if that's the desire.
So we'll open.
You'd need to take a motion now probably to reschedule those matters for, I'm thinking out loud here, reschedule those matters for a study session. And at that study session, or after that study session, at some point, there'd have to be a motion of a regular meeting to set a new public hearing for each of them.
Okay. So I would make a motion, I move to move Council Bill 27 and 28 to the next available study session for further consideration by council.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppy to move two agenda items to a different meeting. Do we have a discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would like to thank Councilmember Urban to bring these to another study session. I feel that there were maybe some holes that we missed, and in having a conversation with Councilmember Urban, we were trying to find the best way to be able to re-study this and then be able to bring it to a place where it's ready for a second reading on an ordinance. So thank you.
And this would be Agenda Items Number Four and Five, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Ms. Haltine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to check before agreeing to postponing to the next study session that staff would be able to prepare for that? Or do we need to look at the best date for staff to do the preparatory work in order to have a good discussion?
Mr. Goff.
Yeah, there's probably no prep work for staff. I think the items are fairly clear. We just need to put them on a study session agenda for council discussion, is my understanding, unless Mr. Urban has something, has more information he'd like to share.
And are we talking on our next, our next study session is a week from tonight on February 1st?
We actually, that agenda's full already.
Okay. Okay, so that's not the next one?
Next study session's probably March 1st, it has available time.
Mr. Mayor, my motion was to the next available study session, it wasn't necessarily to the most immediate.
Okay, very good. So the next available one looks like March 1. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, just as the scheduler, Mr. Goff and I will be looking at scheduling on Wednesday, and so I'd rather it just stay next available.
Next available.
Rather than an exact date.
Good, next available, good. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all is in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hands, and if the clerk would please record the votes.
The motion has passed unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any other modifications to the agenda at this time? Then we'll let the agenda stand as modified. We will go now to our citizen's right to speak. This is the time where any citizen may speak on any item not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. We will do this by bringing you into the meeting, and you may use the Raise Your Hand function, which is located in the Zoom format in the center, at the bottom of the center of your screen, where it says Participants. If you will click that, at the bottom right-hand corner of the next screen, you will see Raise Your Hand. And if you would like to speak, please raise your hand, and we will bring you into the meeting. So this is our citizen's right to speak. When you come into the meeting and we recognize you to speak, please give us your first name and your last name. If you would please spell your last name for the record and give us your address, then you will have three minutes to speak after that, and our mayor pro tem will be the timekeeper. So I will go to Ms. Shek. Do we have anyone raising their hand wanting to speak tonight?
We do. First up is Guy with Dan Brennan on deck.
Okay, Guy Namiach will bring you into the meeting.
Wow, in front of Dan Brennan, I love it. This is Guy Namiach, N-A-H-M-I-A-C-H, 3650 Ward Road, Wheat Ridge. So this is Guy from The Gazette. And I just wanted to thank the city for partnering up and promoting our parks in this last edition of The Gazette. That was a really great ad, and the Parks Commission or the Parks Department is already getting huge response from the community. And while we always try to keep it to good news and positive, I want to thank the Wheat Ridge PD for opening up and helping with the human trafficking story right here in our backyard, sad, but the Wheat Ridge PD was amazing in sharing everything that's actually being done by the city and the staff in combating that. And finally, look for the February issue with promoting and writing about what the city is already doing to fund and provide resources to affordable housing and share that with our readers and our citizens. Again, thanks so much for all your help. The Gazette's been getting really great feedback, and we're actually distributing into Edgewater as well. So thanks for that. Have a good night.
Thank you very much for joining us. And now we have former Chief Brennan on the line with us.
Thank you, Mayor Starker, and council, it's great to see all of you again, as well as city staff. I am Dan Brennan, D-A-N-B-E-R-N-N-A-N, formerly of Wheat Ridge. If you haven't heard, I recently moved to another area, the metro area, to be closer to my grandchildren, but I'm still involved with the Wheat Ridge Rotary Club and the Feed the Future program and continuing to try to move those things, the Feed the Future program, forward. So I talked to Patrick this afternoon, and I wanted to give just a quick update to council on Feed the Future. First of all, I would like to thank you for your approval of the outside agency funds, the $8,000, to help continue the Feed the Future Backpack Program. We annually spend approximately $25,000 a year to provide food for needy elementary-age children at Stevens, Pennington, and Color Strand Elementary. The amounts of money that we've gotten this year has left us in a little bit of a predicament because we haven't had school. So we have not been able, as a program, to actually provide food for children. A number of other agencies have stepped in to sort of fill that gap. I had a discussion today with our provider, Community Table, in regards to restarting the program. But we were blessed last year with a lot of donations. So I wanted to ask council if I could get a consensus or agreement to perhaps utilize that $8,000 differently and repurpose it, still with the desire to assist needy children in Wheat Ridge. And the way we would like to use that money is to provide for programs such as Coats for Kids. This is a well-known program that provides coats for elementary and middle-school children that don't have access to coats, the purchase of food or personal items for the pantries in a number of our elementary schools. Schools use for emergency situations for families or for students who don't have food or personal items, even clothing, come to school. Perhaps the purchase of gloves, socks, hats for homeless children that attend our schools. And the schools have informed me that there's a need for IT accessories with the Zoom meetings and, you know, Zoom or GoToMeetings, some of these different formats being used to provide classroom curriculum to students. A lot of these kids that attend some of, that come from, you know, families that don't have the economic resources, they can't buy them the headphones or microphones and some of the equipment they need. So I'm asking on behalf of Feed the Future if council would be so kind to give us the opportunity to repurpose that $8,000 to try to fill some of these other gaps that exist right now. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that request, Chief. I'll turn it over to council. Do we have any, let's go with any objections? You know, that's probably a better way to do it. So we'll sort of be unanimously approved with that proposal, Chief? If that works for you.
It does work for us, and I'd be happy to provide, you know, a letter to the city once that money's expended to let you all know how that was spent.
We'd love to have that. And before I let you go, are you able to give us a way that if citizens were listening right now, they might be able to make a contribution to the Feed the Future program? What's the best way to get money into that program?
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate that opportunity. So there are two ways, actually, to get money directly into the program. If you go to the Wheat Ridge Community Foundation website or the Community Table website, they both have, in their main menu, a drop-down box for donations and contributions. And the Wheat Ridge Feed the Future program is there. You can fill in the information that they require, just like you would for Colorado Gives Day or any other sort of purchase, and enter the amount that you want, and that'll get credited to our account.
That's terrific. So that's the Wheat Ridge Community Foundation website and the Community Table website with a drop-down menu for the Feed the Future would be able to take donations there.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Chief Brennan, we really appreciate you coming back to see us tonight. Always good to hear your voice, and I hope everything is going well.
It is going well, and I don't miss going through those staff packets anymore.
Well, you missed some pretty interesting stuff, I gotta tell you.
I have missed an interesting year. Wish you all well, you're doing a great job, thank you.
All right, well, listen, Chief, thanks very much for joining us tonight. We hope to see you again sometime soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Bye.
Goodbye. Ms. Shek, any additional speakers on the line for citizen's right to speak?
No one with their hand up, Mayor, but we have a caller I've unmuted to see if they'd like to speak.
Okay, if you're on the telephone, you may unmute yourself if you wish to speak under citizen's right to speak, and we will bring you into the meeting. Okay, I don't hear any more citizens for citizen's right to speak, Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind some of the citizens that if they're waiting to speak on Items Number Four or Five, we have removed those from the agenda, which is why we approved the agenda before citizen's right to speak. So it's no longer on the agenda. This would be your appropriate time to speak if you were waiting to speak on those items on our meeting.
Thank you for that clarification. We have postponed Items Four and Five for another night, but, so they will not come up in tonight's meeting? Any more comments, hands raised, Ms. Shek?
None, Mayor.
Okay, we will close our citizen's right to speak then and move on to our numbered agenda. We will start with Agenda Item Number One. Mr. Urban, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item Number One, Council Bill 24-2020, Ordinance Repealing and Reenacting, Section 7-6 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Law concerning creation of a process for addressing complaints alleging campaign finance violations in city elections.
Okay, this is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing, it is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing and going to go to Mr. Dahl. Do you have a brief report on this item?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, that, this item's gonna be handled by Jeff Wilson, special counsel at our firm. I believe that he is on the line.
I see him here in the world of squares. So, Mr. Wilson, thank you for joining us.
There he is.
Pleasure to be in the rectangle this evening, Mayor. Good evening to you and members of the council. You've heard this ordinance already in a work session, a study session, excuse me. As you'll recall, the legislature in 2019 declared that any complaints in connection with campaign finance matters in municipal elections had to be heard rather than at the state level, as was previously done at the local level. In consequence, municipalities all over the state have been enacting ordinances such as this one, most based after the state law, such as this one, to provide those local processes. That's the main purpose of this ordinance. The ordinance also clarifies which election codes apply in city elections.
Okay, thank you very much for that staff report. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open this up to the public for comment. If there's anyone in the public wishing to speak on Agenda Item Number One, this is the opportunity to do that. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand in the Zoom format, and we will bring you into the meeting. And I'm going to ask Ms. Shek if we have anyone that's raised their hand to speak. Okay, I'm gonna give you one, I'll give you another, a few more opportunity to speak and reach for that raise-hand feature, but we don't see anyone. So we will close our citizen's right to speak portion of this item and go to questions from council. Are there any questions from council before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? All right, I don't see any questions. I'm going to close the public hearing. And Mr. Urban, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 24-2020, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 7-6 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Law concerning creation of a process for addressing complaints alleging campaign finance violations in city elections on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second. We have a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? All right, I see no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand, and will a clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for that presentation.
My pleasure, Mayor.
We will go to Agenda Item Number Two. Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Council Bill Number 25-2020, an ordinance adopting Section 16-47 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Law concerning unlawful removal or defacing of notices on public property and establishing penalties for violation of the same.
Okay, this is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing, it is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Dahl, are you providing any report on this item?
Yes, I am, very briefly. You have seen this ordinance and the next one at study session, I think in October, and directive that it be brought forward to you for first and second reading. This ordinance works in concert with the next ordinance, which involves trespassing and violating areas that have been posted as no trespassing. This particular ordinance that is in front of you as Agenda Item Number Two makes it unlawful to remove a notice, and notices are defined. This is frankly to enable the city to be able to post no trespassing notices in various places where the city does not want to have persons occupying primarily public property under underpasses, et cetera.
under underpasses, et cetera, and allows the city to, to enforce if those notices are removed by persons. So that's the purpose of this ordinance. The next one is a little more involved, but they work together.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open this up to questions from the public. If you would like to speak on agenda item number two, this is your opportunity. If you would please raise your hand in the Zoom format, or if you are on the telephone, unmute yourself and ask to speak, we'll bring you into the meeting and take public comment on that. And...
I don't see anyone, Mayor.
We don't see anyone? Okay. We will close our public comment on this issue and open it up to questions from council. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on the language of this ordinance, this is exclusive to notices posted by the City of Wheat Ridge and not CDOT or any other governmental entity. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. Good question and an important one. It's a pretty narrow focus on this particular ordinance. That's right.
Okay. Do, do we know if other entities have similar penalties or processes or ability to enforce that?
That's also a good question. These two ordinances, especially this one, are modeled on a program that the City of Arvada has put in place. So we know that at least one of our neighbors to the north, Arvada, has similar ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, are there additional questions on this item for staff? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. And Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please provide a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 25-2020, an Ordinance Adopting Section 16-47 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Unlawful Removal or Defacing of Notices on Public Property and Establishing Penalties for Violation of the Same, on second reading, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a second by, and was that Ms. Hoppy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Second by Ms. Hoppy. Do we have a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand, and will a clerk please count the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now go to agenda item number three. And Mr. Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 26-2020, an Ordinance Repealing, Retitling, and Reenacting Section 16-46 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Trespass and Establishing Penalties for Violation of the Same.
Okay. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not, not, it is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing and see if Mr. Goff has a, or Mr. Dahl has a presentation on this one.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Mayor. As indicated in the summary, this appeals, reenacts, retitles, works the city's present code section on trespassing, section 1646, and elaborates on it. Just for your information, if you're wondering, what does 1646 say now? If you look on the second page of this ordinance, letter C, that says trespassing unlawful, that's very close to what is the only section now in, in the city on trespassing. And so you can see that this ordinance elaborates upon just that prohibition and puts together a number of things. Legislative declaration that I think is important because it establishes the city's public purpose in prohibiting trespassing and, and, and makes it unlawful for a person to be or remain upon the property of, of another for public safety purposes. Includes some definitions, including signage, and allows the posting of no trespassing signs to constitute evidence that that's an area that can't be trespassed upon. So that would enable then a prosecution for trespassing to introduce into that case that there was evidence of a sign. There was a no trespassing sign that had been posted, and yet the person was actually there and was remaining there under the classic trespassing language, making the, the case in the municipal court more straightforward. So that's, that's the purpose of the ordinance is to make more enforceable and understandable the trespassing law that the city presently has, and to establish a predicate for that, for trespassing prosecutions, which would include the posting of signs.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions of council, I want to open this up for public comment. If you would like to speak on this agenda item number three, this is your opportunity. We will, you may, you may speak on this item now. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand in the Zoom format, or if you are on the telephone, please unmute yourself, and we will bring you into the meeting. Ms. Shek, do we have anyone that's raised their virtual hand?
No, and I've unmuted the telephone caller.
Okay. Very good. We'll give it one more, one more 20-second or, or less opportunity for people to, to get to their computers and raise that hand and join us. But I don't, I don't see anyone. So we will close our public comment on agenda item number three and open it up to questions from council. We have any questions from council before I close the public hearing and ask for a vote? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. And Mr. Stites, a motion is in order, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 26-2020, an Ordinance Repealing, Retitling, and Reenacting Section 16-46 of Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Trespass and Establishing Penalties for Violation of the Same, on second reading and it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Who thought they got the second?
Hoppy.
Hoppy did.
Hoppy, she's very, she's very quick, okay? We have a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? I see no discussion. We'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand, and will a clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much. We are now at agenda item number four, and before we introduce this, we have agreed to postpone this item and agenda item number five, and I want to go to Mr. Dahl.
I would like to at least have the council make a little record for the record tonight, and what I would ask on this agenda item and the next one is that you, we will not open the hearing, that if you would just take a motion that this hearing is canceled and, and staff is directed to republish for a new hearing subsequent to the study session that you have asked this to be scheduled for. And I'll ask you to take a similar motion for the next agenda item. Then we have a record in the minutes that when we got to that agenda item, we specifically canceled the hearing. I realize we adjusted the agenda at the beginning.
Okay.
I'd like to have that record if you would.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and introduce the item, and we'll read the title, and then we'll take that, that post, a motion to postpone? Okay. Ms. Hutchinson, would you please introduce item number four?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 27-2020, an Ordinance Adopting Section 16-70 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Pedestrian Use of Roadways Center Medians and in Connection therewith Amending Section 16-113 Sales and Solicitation in Certain Places Prohibited.
Thank you. Then, Mr. Dahl, should we take another motion to postpone?
Yes, I can suggest the language for that motion, and, and with any luck, someone will say so moved.
Okay.
A proper, a proper motion would be to cancel the public hearing on item number four, Council Bill Number 27-2020, and direct staff to republish notice of a second reading public hearing after conclusion of the study session to be conducted on this matter.
Ms. Hutchinson, are you able to make that motion?
Just like, get it?
Just say so moved.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hoppy? Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and will a clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now go to agenda item number five, and Ms. Holtine, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 28-2020, an Ordinance Adopting Section 1669 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Pedestrians Hindering the Flow of Traffic.
Thank you. This is an item that the council, under the approval of the agenda, decided to postpone for another date. Mr. Dahl, are you able to provide us a motion wording to accommodate this postponement?
Yes, I can. A proper motion would be to move to cancel the public hearing on Council Bill Number 28-2020 and direct the staff to republish the hearing for a second reading public hearing following the conduct of the study session to be conducted on this matter.
Thank you. Ms. Holtine?
So moved.
So there's a second? We have, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand, and will a clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, it has just passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay. We will now go to agenda item number six. Ms. Hoppy, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number six, Council Bill Number 01-2021, an Ordinance Concerning Use Taxes and in Connection therewith Amending Subsection 22-67, paragraph three of the, or parentheses three of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to Provide a Building Material Use Tax Exemption for Public Housing Authorities. At issue, Section 22-68 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Law, Building Materials and Supplies requires that every person who builds, constructs, reconstructs any building, dwelling, or other structure in the city shall pay a use tax. Section 22-67 of Code exempts public schools, Wheat Ridge Housing Authority, and renewal Wheat Ridge projects from the city's use tax. This ordinance will amend subsection 22-67, parentheses three of the Code to provide the same exemption for public housing authorities.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading. Just set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I have a motion on this item, Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 01-2021, an Ordinance Concerning Use Taxes and in Connection therewith Amending Subsection 22-67, parentheses three of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to Provide a Building Material Use Tax Exemption for Public Housing Authorities on First Reading or to Publish Public Hearing Set for Monday, February 8th, 2021, at 7:00 PM, as a virtual meeting, and that it take effect upon adoption.
Second.
Second.
We had a motion by, who was the motion, or the, who, who got the second? Ms. Hoppy?
I did.
No, oh, Mr. Urban. Okay.
Well, I think, I think I heard a female voice in there. Was that?
It was actually me.
Oh, it was Ms., okay, it was Ms. Holtine. Mr. Urban, you can't, you can't squeeze in like that.
I was in there too. I was in there too.
We have a, a motion and a second. Will all those in favor of the motion please signify by raising your hands, and will a clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
More information, Mr. Urban's title is the fastest second in the West.
You know, I can, I can see that. I just don't hear it as well as I used to. All right. We will go to agenda item number seven. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution Number 04-2021, a resolution amending the 2021 fiscal year general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of 150 grand for the purpose of accepting funds from SCL Health to fund the Lutheran Campus Master Plan.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on this?
We do. Ken Johnson, our community development director, can give a brief presentation on this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Please continue.
Thank you, Mayor and Patrick. I'll actually combine a brief presentation between seven and eight, which are related, seven being the budget supplemental and eight being the, the contract award for the consultant for this project. They require separate action, but I think it's simpler to just start with one presentation. As council is, I think, well aware, SCL Lutheran, our longstanding business partner in the city, purchased a 26-acre site out at Clear Creek Crossing in, back in 2018 now, with the intent of establishing a new hospital campus in the Clear Creek Crossing project as a, an anchor employment use out in that location. It's their intent to relocate their main hospital, as well as a portion of their medical office space. And I would just note that the design process for that new campus is now well underway. It's under city staff review, and will be heard before the planning commission, we anticipate probably around late spring or early summer. So with this impending move, the main hospital and certain other facilities will be decommissioned and either torn down or repurposed in their existing location in the heart of town. A significant portion of the, of the property is also currently still undeveloped, and it's SCL, SCL Health's intent, as you might imagine, to sell off these real estate assets to a third party and only retain portions of the existing campus under their own ownership. So with that as background, SCL approached the city staff last year about mid-year to inform us of their intent and seek our direction as to how best kind of approach the marketing of these real estate assets to the real estate development community or investor community. It was staff's fairly firm direction, I would say, at that point, to suggest that some sort of a community-based master planning process and effort would be a critical kind of first step in understanding what the best future reuse of their, of their camp, of their existing campus would be to ensure that there's, you know, sufficient community buy-in to whatever it is determined to be the best use of that campus for, I guess, let's just suggest the next 100 years, right? Because they've been here well over 100 years already. SCL Lutheran, as a group, agreed to that process and to that concept, and jointly developing kind of a community-based master plan for the site. And essentially what that would be, would be really a simpler and more focused version of what we would often call a suburbia plan, so, such as what has been done around the TOD or 38th Avenue by the city. Again, Lutheran agreed that that master planning effort was a good process, and they in fact agreed to, to fund that. We brought this to city council back in November of last year of 2020 and got consensus that this would be an appropriate approach. We went out to an open bidding process to bring in consulting services for that effort, and we had a, a kind of a joint staff and SCL staff team that reviewed four different proposals to, for consulting services in that effort, and are pleased to bring forward a recommendation to hire on MIG and several other strong and some local subconsultants to, to guide that community planning effort to develop the master plan. So as it pertains to agenda items, item seven, as introduced by Ms. Weaver, requests approval of a budget supplemental that would essentially accept the $150,000 from SCL into the city budget, and then give us the ability, if awarded by city council, to administer the terms of the contract under item eight, which is the request for council approval of a contract award to MIG and subconsultants. And with that, I'm glad to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Before we get to questions from council, I would like to open it up to the public for questions. If you're a member of the public and would like to speak on agenda item number seven, this is your opportunity to do that. If you would raise your hand in Zoom format, we will bring you into the meeting, and you may speak. So I will ask Ms. Shek if we have anyone with their hand raised in the Zoom format.
No, we do not, Mayor.
Or, or on the telephone, if you, you can unmute yourself and... Or on the telephone, if you can unmute yourself and speak also. Don't see anybody? Okay, thank you very much. We'll close our public comment portion on this item and go to questions from council. Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really do appreciate having the community engagement plan. That is such a large parcel of land and so many people live around there that are very concerned about what's going to go on there. Also, I am also interested in the Blue House and also the Chapel. Those are historic buildings. And I would just hate to see those scraped. So if something could be done with them or whatever, I mean, they've been around like forever and they've got a lot of history and very beautiful. I like to see something preserved that's that old and has history in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments, Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm excited to see this moving forward and was excited to see the proposal from MIG, that the group of consultants they're working with are also represented in our cities. I think that'll bode well for a strong process. I'm curious to hear a little bit more about how the city and SCL will be collaborating on the management of this. Just, it's a little bit of a unique situation as far as I've encountered. So I'd just be sort of curious like what the relationship between the city, SCL, and the consultant looks like for this process.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Ms. Hulteen. I think it's been really important in scoping the project since this is a privately-owned 100-acre group of parcels to scope the scope of work for the consultant services jointly with SCL. That said, we also think it's important for the public process that it be clear that as a master planning effort that, you know, the city staff in working with the community and council and various bodies that, you know, we have a real key role in project managing it. So we will be overseeing the day-to-day project management of the consultant at a staff level and facilitating, you know, all the public notices and associated things with the public outreach. So it truly will be a joint effort in terms of ensuring that SCL, as the property owner, has an appropriate role in this master planning process and, you know, the end results jointly meet the community's needs as well as the property owner's needs in joint consultation. So it's kind of a new process for us, but not one that's new in general. I know that the consultant that we've chosen, we certainly asked questions about kind of that joint role and they have great experience in managing similar processes in other jurisdictions where it's a joint master planning effort between a private property owner, in this case, SCL Lutheran, and a public entity such as the city. So it's new ground for us, but we're confident that we'll be able to navigate this joint relationship and have a really good working relationship with SCL Lutheran as we have had for many years.
Great. Well, thank you for that. And like Ms. Hutchinson, you know, I recognize the campus as a balance of, you know, there's some preservation aspects, but I also see it as a really exciting opportunity for Wheat Ridge to, you know, create amazing opportunities for people to bring their best to our community. So I'm looking forward to seeing what this master plan looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions on this item? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Weaver, may I have a motion, please?
May. I move to approve Resolution Number 04-2021, a resolution amending the 2021 fiscal year general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $150,000 for the purpose of accepting funds from SCL Health to fund the Lutheran Campus Master Plan.
Second.
Second.
If you believe that you were the right second, would you please raise your hand? I'm gonna go with Mr. Stites.
It was Mr. Stites.
Okay. So that's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand and will a clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Terrific. We're going to go to agenda item number eight and I'm going to do a redux with Ms. Weaver. Would you please introduce this item?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mayor. This is a motion to award a contract and approve subsequent payments to MIG Denver of Denver, Colorado in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for professional services for the Lutheran Campus Master Plan.
Thank you. We've just had a presentation from Mr. Johnstone that covered this. I would like to go to the public and see if there's anyone out in the public sphere who would like to speak on this. This is agenda item number eight. We were happy to have you speak on this. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand in the virtual format or unmute yourself and ask to be recognized. No one out there? Okay, we will close our public comment. And are there any questions of council on this item? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Weaver, may I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes.
So are there any contingencies or were there any additional scopes that were proposed? Or is this a hard $150,000 contract?
Mr. Johnstone, can you address that one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The base contract is $120,000 with the additional scope of services that was submitted by MIG for various different options that would take the full scope up to the $150,000. We think there likely is some value added in those. They relate primarily to two areas, maybe three areas. One, and this may be less important, but additional technical information related to things like drainage master plans. But I think more importantly, additional scope related to public outreach and additional things like focus groups or, you know, other virtual... You know, we'll kind of see where we are as the process evolves in terms of virtual versus in-person types of use. And then thirdly, graphical representation. So additional graphical support that I think, you know, may go a long ways towards helping the people that are participating in this process, notably the public, you know, understand what concepts visually are being potentially envisioned for this area. So we are requesting authorization for that full $150,000 and will be further negotiating that scope of work detail with MIG, both upfront as part of the initial contract scope and then as the project evolves and we see where additional resources might be needed.
Well, excellent. Well, I appreciate that the contractor in the city are paying attention to those add-on items because they all sound really important. So thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions on this item of staff before we go to a motion? Okay, Ms. Weaver?
I move to award a contract and approve subsequent payments to MIG of Denver, Colorado in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for professional services for the Lutheran Campus Master Plan.
Second.
Second.
I believe Ms. Dozeman had the second on that one. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will go to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and will a clerk please record the votes?
The motion passed unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Dozeman, would you also have the opportunity to introduce agenda item number nine?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A motion to approve a license agreement between the Colorado Department of Transportation and the city for trail improvements adjacent to Clear Creek Crossing and Interstate 70. At issue, the Clear Creek Crossing development is formalizing trail improvements parallel to Interstate 70 between West 40th Avenue and the Clear Creek and within CDOT right-of-way. This license agreement permits the trail to cross over CDOT's access control line for the construction of a pedestrian bike path.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this one?
Just probably real briefly from Mr. Johnstone. I don't think... It's pretty straightforward, but...
Okay.
Probably address the issue.
Mr. Johnstone?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Mr. Goff. Yeah, real briefly, as we've begun to start, begin reviewing the master plan for the new SCL campus as part of the Clear Creek Crossing development on the west side of town, trail access to the Green Belt is obviously critical. And in looking at those concepts of, you know, where best to get trail access, one of the concepts that emerged is an opportunity to have the, I guess I'd say, easternmost access to the Green Belt from the development and from 40th Avenue, actually being located within the I-70 right-of-way. The biggest advantage that this presents is the fact that it can be separated from vehicular conflicts that would otherwise occur with internal to the development. So we think that's a pretty interesting opportunity to have a safer bike ped facility that's located in the excess, at least for now, for the foreseeable future, excess I-70 right-of-way. So that's why this is being proposed. CDOT is very amenable to it, but it requires a license agreement to be located in the I-70 right-of-way and that's the reason for this agenda item.
Thank you. Before we go to questions of council, I'd like to open this up to questions from the public. If you would like to speak on this agenda item number nine, this is the opportunity to do that. Please unmute yourself or raise your hand in Zoom format and we'll bring you into the meeting.
Mayor, we have Guy.
Okay, Mr. Namiach, if you'd please give us your first name and last name and your address, you may continue after that.
Guy Namiach, N-A-H-M-I-A-C-H, 3650 Ward Road, Wheat Ridge. I'm not sure if this is us doing a favor to RTD or RTD doing a favor to us, but in that conversation, can we bring up their, again, wanting to remove the bus line on 32nd Avenue that so many Wheat Ridge and Everett students rely on to get to and from school?
Good question. Mr. Goff or Mr. Johnstone, do you think there's an opportunity to move our partners at RTD?
Well, it's kind of a separate issue, Mr. Mayor. This is an agreement with CDOT, not RTD.
Okay.
But we could look into RTD and where they are on their bus routes. But unless I'm missing something, that's a separate issue and a separate partner.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Namiach. Are there any other members from the public who would like to speak on this item?
I don't see anybody, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. We will close our citizens' right to speak on this agenda item number nine and open it up for questions from council of staff. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this path being proposed in lieu of the bike lanes that were planned last time I saw on the main street going through the new development? Or are those still in place?
A great question and the answer is yes, those are still in place.
All right, great. Yay, more bike ped access. I'm glad. And I think this is actually really well thought out and is something when we were first looking, when I was doing bike ped advocacy work, we were really hoping something like this would stay in place. So I'm excited to see it moving forward and very much support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from council for staff on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will go to a motion. Ms. Dozeman, please.
I move to approve a license agreement between the Colorado Department of Transportation and the city for trail improvements adjacent to Clear Creek Crossing and Interstate 70.
Second.
Second. Second.
If you were the successful seconder, would you please raise your hand? Mr. Urban, put your hand down.
I was.
I think it was Hoppy.
Okay, we'll go with Ms. Hoppy.
I just want to say that I actually did second this time and I thought I was pretty early too.
Yeah, you know, you've really got to be even before time. Okay, discussion on the motion. Not on the second. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand and will a clerk please count the votes and tally them up?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad that you can get to eight and counting. You do a very good job. That brings us to the end of our regular agenda. We're going to flip back to the agenda and call on Mr. Goff for City Managers Matters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not much this evening. Just a reminder for all of our businesses, you can still submit a letter of interest to Jefferson County to participate in the five-star certification program. We only have two at this point businesses in Wheat Ridge that have been pre-certified. But Jefferson County is not eligible yet still, but we are. Our numbers are coming down pretty quickly, our COVID numbers, and we're getting close to back to the orange level. And I think we have to have a seven-day consistent level of COVID cases below, I think, 350 cases on average for a 14-day period. So we might get there pretty soon. So again, if you're interested in participating in the five-star certification program, that will allow you to have more customers into your business potentially. You can sign up with Jefferson County on their website. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll go to City Attorney's Matters. Mr. Dahl?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we will, let's see, I think we'll go to elected officials matters and let us start with our clerk, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those of you on the call as well as anyone in the public watching on television, I wanted to make a comment about some of the rumors you may have heard about the vaccines against COVID-19. Recently, the CDC issued research which says your chances of having an allergic reaction to the Moderna vaccine are 2.5 in 1 million. That is less than your chances of being struck by lightning. With the Moderna vaccine, it's six per million. These are likely to be individuals who had some other complicating process, but it had to be reported. Those are unbelievably small numbers for those of you who are sitting on the fence. The other thing the CDC has announced is you may have to wait, you could wait as long as six weeks after the first dose of the vaccine before you take the second one. So don't be concerned about being able to get access to it in a timely fashion. We are assured by the public health officials, they're working very hard to make sure that happens. As everyone knows, getting people vaccinated is the key to stopping the pandemic and allowing us to go back to a more typical lifestyle here and everywhere. So if you're on the fence, please consider the scientific facts and consider getting the vaccine. Thank you all very much and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkpatrick. We will go to our treasurer, Mr. Chris Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to let everyone know that recently I've heard of lots of, I guess, crimes of opportunity happening in my neighborhood, whether it be opening doors and going through cars, packages stolen, stolen bikes, open garages and that type of crime. There seems to be a rash and increase of that, at least in my neighborhood. And I'd like to remind everyone to not give anyone an opportunity for those types of crimes to happen. Lock your doors, keep your valuables locked up and pick up your packages as soon as you can or ask a neighbor to pick them up for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And Ms. Nosler Beck?
Thanks, Mayor. And ditto to what Chris said and Steve said. But I wanted to just take a moment and thank all of the teachers and administrators and folks that got our Jeffco students back to school last week. folks that got our Jeffco students back to school last week. It is amazing how teachers make the world go round. And it's it's just incredible that we're all in this, all in this together and have made it through and and our our kids are back to somewhat normal, you know, day. And it's it's good for all of us. With that, I know my kids walk to school. And so please, we all kind of got used to like things being pretty desolate out there. Please go to the speed limit and remember that there are people out walking and there are kids out there walking and and just be extra aware because we're still all in this together. So thanks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout out to our Wheat Ridge Historical Society. I received their newsletter that they have kind of been putting back out into the public recently, and they're doing a lot of wonderful things. They're archiving and kind of getting an inventory of all the items that they have in the museum. And they're trying to reimagine their museum experience in their downtime. And they're also still having their second Saturday events via Zoom. And they're just doing an amazing job, taking this opportunity, you know, for people not being out in the public to to still do good in our community. And so I just wanted to thank all those folks, and I really enjoy getting the newsletter. So I just wanted to give Marta Hedy, I believe that's how you say her name, a shout out.
Thanks so much. Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just had a couple of things. I had an opportunity about two weeks ago to be on a panel with, through the Jeffco Public Libraries with the Jeffco Youth, I think it's called CTC, with, I think it was with State Senator Brittany Peterson and Representative Chris Kennedy and the Golden Mayor and a few other people from around the country or from around the state, sorry, talking to the Jeffco Youth about how they can get more involved in government, talking about some of the processes and funding and different things like that. So that was a lot of fun and really interesting. So I want to thank Jeffco Public Libraries for having me in to do that. February 6, Ms. Weaver and I will be hosting the District Three meeting. It's going to be at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center from 9:30 to about 10:30, maybe 11:30, depending on how busy it is. We can take 25 at the Rec Center and then the rest we can take on Zoom. And we'll be posting the links on that on our Facebook pages and all the neighborhood groups and and stuff as well, as you can check the city website. And as usual, I just want to remind everybody to shop local, and if you can find it in Wheat Ridge, make sure you buy it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a, I I shouldn't, she would not want me to say this, but she's over 70, a mom. And and I know that some people have had trouble who are over 70 getting access to the vaccine should they want to to take it, and I would encourage everyone to take it. And I I've been doing a little research and some friends have helped me quite a bit. But there is a wonderful website that allows you access to some of the places specifically. This one is for the Albertson Companies where Safeway will take anyone and the vaccine if they are over 70. And I don't know if this is something kind of like the Radon website, but I is there, can I send this to someone at the city and it can be listed? But if people go to mhealthcheckin.com, no spaces or dots, that's mhealthcheckin.com, they can get an appointment at Safeway and get on the on the schedule if you are over 70 for that vaccination. I just found that it was actually a little difficult if your health provider didn't call you to to get the vaccination if you were older than 70.
Thank you.
Please come to the meeting on Saturday for District Three.
Good information, and 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 I hope you have a great turnout on your meeting. It's great to be out there. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to do a little shout out to the Let's Talk program. This in the last week, the Let's Talk staff members put out a report for East Wheat Ridge and for Bel Air that are available on the website and encourage people to take a look at that. And as a follow up to the first round of community engagement, they're hosting two community meetings this Saturday. At 8:30 a.m., they're hosting a meeting for residents of the Bel Air neighborhood, which is roughly west of Wadsworth from 38th to Clear Creek. And then I can't remember how, like, it's a funny boundary. Anyway, so that neighborhood is from 8:30 to 10:00. And then the East Wheat Ridge neighborhood is from 10:30 to 12:00. Both of those are online, and I highly encourage people to participate in those. They're holding a second round of a second, if you can't make it on Saturday, they're hosting on Tuesday night for Bel Air and then on Thursday night of next week. So that's February the 2nd for Bel Air and February the 4th for East Wheat Ridge. And this is just really a great opportunity for you to learn what we've learned from our citizens about what's important to them and what some of the priorities and options are moving forward before staff prepares a proposal to bring to council this spring. So it's a great way to be heard and engage and help shape the future, not of the city, but of your neighborhood. So I hope to, I I plan on participating and hope to to see people there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hulteen. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are you okay?
I can.
Great. I can't believe that council member Nosler Beck, I forgot to mention this, so I'm gonna grab all the cookie orders here. Trip 380, which includes Brown, Nosler Beck children as well, is the official supplier of Girl Scout cookies for the city of Wheat Ridge. And so they'll be accepting orders in the in the coming week. And so if anybody has any desire for cookies, Trip 380 and Wheat Ridge is your official supplier. That's it.
This is America, this is a message very antithetical to the, you know, to the to the losing weight and part of my New Year's resolutions, Mr. Urban. So I don't know how this is all going to play out in the future. But thank you. Thank you for the inside information.
There is an option to donate the cookies, so you can actually support them without eating anything.
I'm not sure that that's really ever ever taken up, though. Okay, Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to say another bit everybody already knows is please continue to wear masks, social distance, and wash your hands when you're in public. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. That just about, it just about brings us to the end of our end of our our meeting here. I want to go back to what Mr. Namiach said about about Parket and Wheat Ridge. We we've got a nice little program going on. If you're able to go out and visit our parks, we have 20 parks in the city, a lot of great, they're all different, too. It's like, you know, our our community is a lot of individuals. They're great to, great parks to be in and 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 we hope you really get out and enjoy those this year. It was with sadness this this week that I learned that Meredith Record had passed away. Meredith was a senior planner with the city of Wheat Ridge for about 30 years. She was, did great, great work, was always a very a pleasure to work with. I did a number of projects with her. She was a consummate professional. And and I was very sorry to see her, see her pass away. She did great work for our city and was a valued employee. We, let's see, I think that probably has everything that I had on my list. Is there any other business to come before council? If not, then we will stand adjourned. Thank you all for for being here. Have a safe week. We may get a little snow this week, so please be careful. As Ms. Nosler Beck said about all the all the children and on the streets and and actually all of us, because there's been a lot of walking going on. So stay safe, be healthy out there. It's a hard, healthy month, so watch out what you eat and get some exercise. Thank you very much. We will see you next week. Good night.